Conversation with the board members. OPI, which is total information practice. All, not only one, we're not following the sunshine law. The sunshine law that any item that is discussed must be on the agenda. So as such, I will uphold that rule. If, if anyone speaks and is not on the agenda, I will turn you off. Okay, that's the simplest way I could say it because um we send an email to all, all people. So you folks have to understand right now, the Neighborhood Commission has a major problem to resolve this so-called incident that um we're not following the sunshine law. And I myself is one of the culprits that I always ask the police department about uh certain activities that I see on uh crime mapping. And that was a no-no, so anyway, uh can you just please uh hold up on any questions? That is not on the agenda. And if you feel that it should be on the agenda, we can put it for next month's meeting and then we can discuss it. Thank you. As such, I, I open the meeting for Neighborhood Board fourteen. Um commence. Yeah. Fire Department. Can you please come up to the mic?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Deshaun Duncan Benson. I'm firefighter here at the Kualakini Station. Uh, the statistics provided, well, I'm about to provide are represented uh confirmed number of incidents in the geological area or geographical area. Uh, for more details on incident and related mapping information, please visit the fire response map on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov under the news and info tab. Should you have any questions, you can email HFD's Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. So in the month of November, uh as far as fires go, we had one structure fire and uh one cooking fire. Emergencies, we had a hundred and sixteen medical and three motor vehicle collisions. Uh during the holidays, uh food definitely has a unique way of bringing family and friends together. Uh, cooking can be a relaxing activity. However, it is important to be aware that cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and home injuries. By following a few safety tips, you can prevent these dangerous situations. Stay alert while cooking. If you're sleepy or have consumed alcohol, avoid using the stove or stove top. Always stay in the kitchen while cooking. Never leave the stove and heated appliances unattended. Use a timer to remind yourself to check on food regularly. Keep flammable items like oven mitts, wooden utensils, food packets, towels away from the stove top. And last but not least, keep your children and pets at least three feet away from the cooking areas. Uh, thank you.
Uh, any question for the Fire Department?
Oh yeah, no problem. I think we had more fun than anyone else.
Um, I have, I have one. Um, you know, on the three vehicle accidents, do you, can you tell us the location of the intersection or where the accident occurred?
Uh, at this time, I'm unable to answer that question, but uh you can definitely go to the fire response map on our HFD website and figure that out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Home Police Department. Are you online? Okay, uh move forward, uh Board of Water Supply. None, okay. Okay, moving on. Um, item three, filling of vacancy, uh vacancy district four is open. That's the video sub. Uh, is there anyone want to volunteer for sub district four? Next. Number four, uh residents, community concerns. I think we have someone, yes.
My name is Leanna Ben, and I am the coordinator for our Neighborhood Watch on at New Uwano and Bates. I'm also a member of New Uwano Baptist Church, even though I'm on District twelve, my home address is in District twelve, actually. Um, because New Uwano is split into two neighborhood boards, both boards have concurred with our request to have a crosswalk painted that is at the corner of New Uwano and Bates for ye correspondents, which I gave to the board members dating back to twenty nineteen. Okay, now they cite Complete Streets. Well, Complete Streets has not done anything, and we need that sidewalk back. Um, it's, it's really distressing. I may go to Jesus before I see that sidewalk painted, you know, you never know. But I'm hoping that maybe Santa will give us the gift of painting that sidewalk. Not sidewalk, I'm sorry, crosswalk, 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 crosswalk. Um, we have church members that have to go up the street to Jude, um Judge Street, and back across the street at the traffic light and down just to come to church. We have grandma grandpas that live in the condos that pick up their children at HBA school, and they have to basically jaywalk. Now, the city official told us jaywalking is okay. Well, not really, because when you're, there's an accident, the police department will say, were they in a crosswalk? Right? Does it make sense? And we teach our children, we drill it into our kids, walk on a crosswalk, don't jaywalk. So this board had concurred with us back in twenty nineteen, I believe, about this having our crosswalk repainted. But they said, well, we got construction, da-da-da, we gotta fix the sewer line. Well, it's all piled. And I wrote the mayor's office, and they gave me this sad answer that, oh, project street, um Complete Streets, I'm sorry, Complete Streets says that it's not possible. Well, Complete Streets has not come about, so we need it back. Okay? And I know that um the other neighborhood board had already put a resolution or they had resolved to tell the city that they concurred with our position, and we have done it. Is Santa's coming?
Uh, right now, we have this on um number seven uh for the city. Uh, item four, A four, uh which is the painting of the sidewalk, so when the
Crosswalk, crosswalk.
Crosswalk. When the representative for the mayor comes up, we'll stress this thing. He's over there sitting down right now.
Good. And just a note that across the sidewalk has the curbing already for a handicap person. Okay, so we need to have that.
Yes, you will have it back.
Sorry, Chair, I need to, had a question for the resident? And Board of Water Supply just walked through the door. Hi, Iris, sorry. I'm sorry, I mistake your name.
Lea, Lea. Leanna Ben.
Leanna, sorry.
The banana, the rotten banana.
Thank you. I wanted to ask. Thank you. I wanted to ask, is there any sort of bus stops or anything around that crosswalk? There's one bus stop right nearby.
Both sides.
Because, okay, um, actually, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, we, and that missed the bus several times, that lived in Sakura. Yeah, Sakura across the street, trying to cross to catch the bus that was coming down, and she couldn't make it.
But, and then you can stop me if I need to stop, by the way. But the only reason I ask is because we had a similar issue on School Street regarding a similar thing where the Department of Transportation was pushing back on us repainting a crosswalk um in front of HPA, I think. And that crosswalk had bus stops on both sides.
We do too.
So that's why I ask, thank you.
Yeah, the thing is that um New Uwano Street is a, New Uwano Avenue, it's a very congested area in the morning and afternoon, because I've been there, I know it is very congested. And I can imagine trying to cross the street at that time, so yes. Um, we will, the Neighborhood Board will push this issue as far as we can. Thank you. Uh, is there any uh more uh citizens concerned? Yes, I'm up to the mic.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Rooney, I'm a resident, um and it's traffic concern, but a slightly different approach. Um, I am here because I have been talking with the city and I'm trying to put in a curb extension at New Uwano and Judd, far from Bates. The city and county Department of Transportation Services actually has a process that you can engage in through their Capala Toolbox that allows you to propose and fundraise and make changes to the right of way. Um, specifically this corner, I have handouts to show you the design that um DTS put together for me. Um, for those of you that are familiar with the curb extension, it is when you add and take from the pavement um create more pedestrians space, so basically it was done a curve down. Um, this particular intersection has a really, really large crosswalk for people walking and um although I've lived in the Neighborhood Board District for six years, this is the first year that my son has been crossing it regularly to get to Seeks, and I decided to do, try to think about it. Um, so you can see the proposal. This is the first step in the process in the Capala Toolbox where you ask DTS to help you craft a solution. It is based on the Complete Streets design that had been pushed forward for New Uwano, which includes a lot of things up and down, but this is just one particular corner and one particular intersection. It cuts the crossing by about forty percent. Um, and so the second step in the Capala Toolbox is to build a team and to reach out to community members um and your neighbors. So that's what I'm kind of doing. Um, full disclosure, I am a transportation professional, so I'm coming in with a lot of knowledge about the process that most people don't have. Um, we're gonna be, well, I'd like to hear if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, what additional information folks would like. Um, and I'm going to put a team together of folks who would be interested, so if you have suggestions, that would be great. And then do some grant applications to get the funding. I have a preliminary budget of six to nine thousand dollars that it would cost to implement this project, and that's what I'm gonna be working on. So, slightly different, but still the same issues, so.
I thank you for the information. Um, corner picking up every so often, and the city answer is judge, this is where the communities are, uh it's wide, that's why their answer was, um, we need to have a cure for why, but since um the expertise and you're saying that, no. And it's so the mayor's we will have this on our new business, and we will track this thing. Because as far as I'm concerned, it has been brought up many times.
Yeah, and I speak to the larger, what I can say is that the current design for one that wrote renovated does include this, so that's why it's kind of approved already. I didn't, they had to do it, they sort of, I was just, yes, working through their process, make it a community service project. It's just a slightly different approach, right? So whether or not they want it, I think, is a different, or when.
Like I said, this corner has been brought up many. Their answer was, sorry, because of the first street, uh we cannot small change everything to this on our new business, we have to see, and we will follow this, see when we can have this thing go.
And if anybody would like to support, either just come in, or you know, folks, if they can help connect me, then you can talk to your report, they can touch on me.
Chair. Is that Cora? Yep, this is Cora. Um, well, I'm having audio problems, two problems. One is there are lots of helicopters going by my house overhead, so I can't hear anything. They're, they're almost gone, but um Chair, can you get the microphone maybe closer to you? Um, I, I'm getting, um, it's coming, the, your audio is coming in and out. I can hear others, okay? Maybe that's, um, and I think uh Carol, Carol was having the same problem, but I also want to I, I want to uh thank Kathleen Rooney for bringing this to our attention, that, you know, she is working through the process. Um, you should know that she's a, also a fellow member of the CAC, the Community, the um, the Community Advisory Committee to AMPO, um, and she's our chair. So she comes with a lot of expertise and uh is working through the process. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
As far as we're concerned, this business, we will track this item.
Center line, or to the right, like move center line, no turn line, because there's no crosswalk on that side.
Yeah.
And intersection who are of, so, um, I mean, there's a lot put it, also can't fit lanes, point, I'm job, it's too tight, we can't even fit a sidewalk in it, so much less the second lane of traffic. So it would only be at two point. It then require though pedestrians to cross three lanes of traffic where there are currently only two, which is a third, you know, a third more brochure to traffic, um including kids walking to school who they currently don't see very well. That in, that particular intersection is also subject to a lot of um historical near misses as well as um fatality. And so it's part of the reason is because it's so wide and keeping it that width and adding extra lanes would make, would contribute to the, the the less safe of that intersection. What's being proposed here where the turn radius drops down, actually slows traffic, reduces the exposure for people walking? And um, it is, but that corner is blind. If you're taking a left from New Uwano onto Judd, I've almost been hit several times. We used to live off of Judd, so I can, up until last year. So, you know, it's because, I mean, it's because where they're looking for pedestrians is not where the pedestrians are. And so in this particular case, that particular turn lane would slow down traffic in off-peak times, and it reduces the crossing exposure. So you can make that trade-off. Um, we've done it a lot in this country for the past forty years, and that's why we actually have a traffic fatality crisis in this country. We lose a person on our roads every single week in Oahu, so. Um, and I guess that's, you know, but that's the reason why you wouldn't want to do it. I mean, there's not a lot of grass there, and I would say it's like, my, the kids who walk in that direction, like, that's really sad that we can't even allow like three feet of grass for people to walk on Judd on the south side to access that bus ramp.
Put sidewalks in along there, there are sidewalks down further.
There are, there are, but there aren't on Judd in that area. I mean, I, you know, I mean, I don't experience that personally all that much, and I've walked a lot in that area as a pedestrian, but I don't see usually that double lane traffic situation. It's usually just one lane of traffic in my experience.
Testing.
I hear you, Senator Kim.
Okay, I can't hear anybody.
Yeah, we, we can't either, we, yep, or, or no audio, no video also.
Yeah, I thought it was just me.
No, I think all of us, Senator, are off, this is Kathy.
Okay. Yeah, I have a hard time hearing because the, I guess the mics in the cafeteria is muffled, so.
I, I think it's the um internet connection there is something's, it's very, it's very latent, there's a latent delay.
Okay.
Oh, here we go, we have some video.
Sorry, everyone on WebEx, can you hear us, see us?
No, we have, we have video, we have video now.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sorry about that. Chair, we can go back.
Okay. Um, you want to speak now?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Ryan Lim, I'm a resident of New Uwano. And um one thing I'd like to ask is, this could be brought up in the next boardroom meeting, this um uh topic is uh in the previous legislative session, there were many bills relating to uh parental rights, and I'm anticipating it'll come up again in this next upcoming legislative session. I just wanted to ask if the board would uh allow us to discuss about uh next month. What bills would be coming up in the uh next legislative in uh children's access to healthcare? Um, I'm particularly concerned about, uh, I know in the last legislative session, there was a bill that allowed, that would allow minors to be able to um get healthcare services related to reproductive, uh, yeah, any reproductive healthcare service without their parents knowing. And this would be extended to children as young as fourteen. And the reason why I was really concerned about this was because um as I was reading the bill, uh, the thing that stuck out to me is that not only do the parents are not required to know, but in the bill, it also said that um the child would also be financially responsible for whatever healthcare they get. And to me, that's a big surprise because you can't even open a bank account at fourteen years old without your parents knowing. So I was, yeah, that's why I wanted to bring it up for the board. Right. Right. Because Ryan Lim, L-I-M, and yeah.
Right now, we have a couple legislature and inaudience right now. And we can ask if they have any input on what you're, you're asking for. And we can see what type of answers they have to support what you want.
Okay, I would greatly appreciate that, thank you for your time.
Any more citizens concerned? While you're not, I see my Board of Water Supply representative, uh, we don't want to keep her too long, so we would ask her to come up and give us the report for the Board of Water Supply.
Hi, everyone, sorry for the delay, I'll just talk like this. Um, so for December's general announcement, oh, for one, I usually mention main breaks and general announcements. I don't have any main breaks to report for the month of November. So my general announcement for December is, so it's scams, so it's the holiday season, and utility scams, scams tend to increase during this time of the year. So be aware, the Board of Water Supply will never call you demanding a bill payment under immediate threat of shutting off your water service. And two is the, will never accept payments via Bitcoin prepaid cards or third-party payment apps. Uh, so make sure if you see so, and to verify their credentials, and if, that's if you're approached by anyone claiming to be from the Board of Water Supply. And then be cautious of emails urging you to click on an embedded link or an attachment to pay a bill, because we don't send it like that. And lastly on this net note is, online bill payments is done through the Board of Water Supply's payment portal. So you go to boardofwatersupply.com, and you can look for pay your bill. So when in doubt, call the Board of Water at seven four eight five thousand, eight oh eight, seven four eight, five thousand, option zero. And I guess I'll just mention, since November was a recess, I just want to let you guys know, we're also trying to recruit for employees, so you share your future and become a part of the dynamic and role-run city organization that protects Oahu's precious water resources. We promote your um growth as an employee, and we support your work-life balance. So we're looking to fill permanent full-time positions in engineering tech now, engineering, in information technology, customer care, and administrative support. And we also have contract positions available. So again, you go to boardofwatersupply.com/jobs/featured hashtag BWS. So kind of search around the site and you look for jobs. And so, yeah, join the water, to Board of Water Supply and become a water protector. So that was my two announcements, November and December. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yes. Bye.
Other days.
Uh, is there any more um citizens concerned? Okay, let's move on. Um, a report for um members that attended other meetings, is there any? Anyone on the virtual? All right, let's move on. Um, the next one is number six, which is the AMPO Planning Organization Meeting. Uh, Cora, Yamauro, are you there for your report?
I am here, and I will give the report of the Citizens Advisory
Uh, the Citizens Advisory Committee of the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is for transportation, met on December fourth, twenty twenty-four, monthly meeting. And uh, the main highlight, well, there, there's several things that happened. There was a good report on a study done to try to um move um state employees to uh greener types of transportation modes. Um, and I think I, I mentioned that earlier, uh, not a previous month, but the it uh good news is that the Ampo staff has been busy working to get federal grants for different purposes and two just got approved. One is a um, where's that four hundred thousand dollar grant to implement safe routes to schools. And this is in the planning process now, looking at different priority areas where it's not as safe for kids to get to school transportation-wise. Um, and there's also a one point two million federal planning grant that uh will help prioritize and make transportation um decisions more transparent um on Oahu and uh more accessible to the public to have input.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you. Um, by the way, uh, how is your feet?
Oh, it's uh, no, my feet are fine. Uh, I'm, I'm just staying away this month. I'm having a total knee replacement on my left knee next week. So you won't, yeah, so I will, I'll be kind of, you know, uh, virtual for a few months.
Thank you. Number seven, uh, electric official and government agency, the mayor's representative.
Hello and happy holidays. Edward Lospanos, Deputy Director, Department of Community Services. Um, happy holidays on behalf of the mayor. So from the mayor's newsletter this month, highlights include, um, you know, this year for Honolulu City Lights and Kapolei City Lights, we partnered with Show Aloha Land. Uh, those are the folks that were doing the um holiday light exhibition over at the Loa Stadium. So if you visit Kapolei Halle or Honolulu Halle, you notice a lot of the similar um light features there. So um, so it's been a great partnership for this year and this is the theme for this year's um display, Show Aloha. Also in the newsletter, cities preparing to announce a new landfill site. We are on track to make that announcement this month. And you know, we've been doing a lot of prep work here because it's not going to be a popular decision any which way. I mean, there's no good way to do it. But also, you know, reflect that we're living on an island and this number of sites that actually meet all the requirements for this, for the site. So it doesn't include our, our water, um, water table. Creates a good buffer zone, you know, for affected areas around it. All those kind of things kind of weigh into that. So there's not going to be, we're preparing to do it, but honestly, there's not going to be a great answer. I don't think there's a solution that can make everybody happy on this, but uh unfortunate fact of life is that we do generate waste and um it's got to go somewhere. Also in there, um, a couple more highlights here is better um celebrating Oahu's storied places. We did receive a one million dollar grant from Bloomberg Harbor. Uh, we were one of eight cities to do this in a competitive environment. And so what the million dollars are investing in um site improvements and other kinds of storyboards and different kind of forms where there's statues or other things to kind of showcase the the, tell the stories of different sites on Oahu or Wahipana is how we framed it. And there's going to be eleven sites on this island. Um, you can go onto the website and see a list of, post list of sites that are there. We also welcome new leaders for Department of Parks and Recreation. Uh, we got a deputy director there. Climate change stability and resiliency. We got a new deputy director over there, a new director for Department of Information as well as the um, last you want to highlight um the immersive learning experiences we've been having for students. So this past month, we did uh, we did host the folks from Castle High School. So any schools out there interested in, um, you know, wanting to with students interested in a career at the city, we're happy to host them and run them through, I think, the month before that, we hosted many of schools. Um, but hoping to expand that program and uh hopefully recruit some future leaders. Relative to the reports, um, the items that I had on the agenda. First one up, I have the monster home status, a monster home on sixteen oh four Hanai Loop. DPP reported there's been no update. Um, they'll keep us posted once if there is an update available on that one. Uh, monsters home status on twenty forty-three Leha Street. Um, DPP inspector needs additional time to uh put together, to do research and perform an inspection of that site to confirm uh what's going on over there, as well as the other one that we have sixteen twenty-one uh Pohaku Street that was reported. Um, but for sixteen twenty-one Pohaku Street, HPD did get back. They shared that um HPD, as well as the city store property ordinance team, was able to clean up around the area. Unfortunately, it's private property. We didn't have permission to go on to private property to do to uh clear the breeze on that side. Um, HPD did report that when they were doing their enforcement activities around the areas, they did encourage around there, if you see thing, um, and uh, do their best they can to uh get that situation resolved and address any trespassing. Um, and then again, like I said, DPPs needs more time to do research, form an inspection to see what the violation is and what, what kind of next steps they can do on their side. So they're requesting one month. Um, and hopefully have a report for us in January. Next item I have is the malfunction pedestrian crosswalk button on School Street, Kalihi Street. So the crew, DTS crews did go out there, they on the faulty isolator, causing a circuit for push buttons. So they replaced it on October point three. They're pouring that, that is report of working property now. If anybody has um any feedback on that, if it's not, uh, please let me know. Last I have here is the sorry. I have here, uh, this was installed, painted crosswalk in New One Avenue and Bay Street. Actually, one didn't come up for me or get reported. I don't know when it uh popped up, whether it was this meeting or the last or this team on this meeting. Um, I haven't had a chance to report that out to uh get feedback, but we'll get it on the list and hopefully have feedback for January.
Um, the sixteen oh four on I Loop. And I believe you told us last time that there was a work permit, work permit was authorized by the building. Um, because I know they're working on the building, so the the uh work permit or building permit must have been approved. So if this is the case, because I, they are working on it, I would like to take it off because it, 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 it's not a problem anymore.
Okay.
Okay. And the other one on the Pohaku Street?
Yep.
Do the, the city or the police department know who's the owner of the property? Because the thing is that, like you said, right, police department cannot go on private property without permission of the owner. So the question I have is that because of this problem we have on the squatters, do we know who's the owner and will the owner so-called prosecute trespassers?
Sorry, there was that, that your specific question wasn't um addressed in the report, not that I can see directly to answer a question whether or not they've any attempts been made to reach out to the property owner.
Okay, because the thing is that uh, this has been on for a couple months already and the thing is that um on private property without permission of it's still like a standoff. The guy is there, he can't do anything about it. The question I have is that now do we know who's the owner? And who the owner do that prosecute, prosecute uh borders for uh trespassers? And that's the question I have right now. Wait. It's not an item anymore.
Yes, that correction on Hanai Loop that it's a different permit and that's what we're proceeding with.
Yeah. Okay. And the other one, I'm picture right now is a real issue is the paint of a crosswalk on Wano and Bates. That's what I just think because um, right now he really wants this crosswalk painted as far as I'm concerned. And like I said, it's been on our board minutes for at least three months already. And to me, that's not uh so-called acceptable condition. We want this thing to be painted and we want it painted now. So anyway, can you have this and have, can you ex- expelite the problem? And have it stained painted so we can talk uh agenda? Thank you.
So we've erased the uh crosswalk at Nono and Bay Street. Um, looking to the minutes of meetings, this is the first time I'm seeing this item, so it's actually, this administration wasn't
because, because all the residents have been asking for, like, I, we were asking for the school street painting and finally we got it painted after couple, three months. So anyway, we can, okay, change ends.
Um, I was gonna say I'd be willing to write a resolution regarding the New One on Bay Street issue of that chair, and then I can present it next month. That way to get the ball rolling. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh. Come up and speak to us.
Just have a question. When you have a situation where you have squatters and illegal activity, one, the illegal activity has to do with drugs. Is this in a weed and seed area? Because if it's in a weed and seed area, you can condemn the property and, and the owner can lose the property, right? Senator Rhodes? Okay, if, if the property is in a weed and seed area and there's illegal activity that we can document, doesn't the property owner have a chance of losing that property in a seizure? Because that was done in Kunaui side.
The short answer is yes. Um, but getting the, getting the area in a weed and seed area, I, I don't think it is right now. So you have to go through the process of testing. Uh, but it's still hard to do. It's not, you know, it's not just.
And the other thing about squatters, because we had one that, um, Pensacola Street, right? And it was just a dump. So city condemned it, right? Didn't the city condemn the property? Because if the owner doesn't want to take care of their property, we can condemn it.
So I think um, one of the steps as a reporter is DPP is looking to do to see what kind of violations they have to kind of organize their case. This is kind of a situation where you got to measure twice and cut once um to make sure we were effective in what we're, and the approach we're taking. Uh, the sixteen twenty, um, Pensacola Street property that the city did condemn, um, it was, there was, they were delinquent on a number of other matters that um helped with the condemnation proceeding. It wasn't just on the, the principle that the property was derelict and in bad condition. Uh, there were a number of fines mounting on the property. Those are violations filed and other things like that. So again, the process that DPP is looking at is a process to perfect the case and um build their best case to proceed efficiently and effectively.
Okay, yeah. And also um, on the malfunction of the pedestrian crosswalk button, I'll take that off because like you said, you already done it. It's, you checked it. And as far as I'm concerned, it's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Have, happy holidays.
Uh, next is uh B, District Six Council Member, Eduardo Dos Santos Cam.
Hi, this is Lisa Leonardo. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, this is Lisa Leonardo from Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office. Um, before I get to what's on the agenda responding to that, I just want to bring up um a couple of highlights from Councilmembers' December twenty twenty-four newsletter. Uh, the first one is under Bills and Legislation, Bill fifty-two, there's some progress on e-bikes legislation. In August of this year, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam alongside Councilmember Talba, who represents the Waipahu to Eva Beach areas, introduced Bill fifty-two, which focuses on regulations for e-bikes. The rise in vehicular accidents involving e-bike riders has exemplified the grave need for stronger safety protections, especially for young riders commuting to school and work. Bill fifty-two has enabled both offices with assistance from the Department of Transportation Services to establish an e-bike working group. This group includes a wide range of city, state and private sectors experts, all collaborating to develop practical legislation around e-bikes. As a group, uh, they were able to come up with a framework to help riders, drivers and pedestrians better understand laws around e-bikes. They expect to have a new draft of the bill ready by the new year. Another legislation is maximizing the use of pedestrian malls. Uh, their office, our office introduced Bill fifty-six on October third. This legislation proposes transferring the control and coordination of all pedestrian malls on Oahu from the Department of Parks and Recreation to the Department of Transportation Services, notably all seven pedestrian malls, which are the College Walk, Ford Street, Ke Kauleke, Kila Kalikimaka, Sun Yat Sen, Union and Kau'udu Vela malls are located in District Six. This transfer aims to optimize the use of these public spaces, enhancing the community's ability to enjoy the downtown and Chinatown areas. Also by placing management under DTS, the permitting process for events and activ- activities will become more streamlined, and efficient, and encouraging greater use of these spaces for gathering culture events. And last from the newsletter, although there's a lot to give, just an announcement there that there is an Aloha Immigrant Rest, Rest Resource Fair on December fourteenth from nine AM to one PM at the Susanna Wesley Community Center in Kalihi. This free event connects immigrants and newcomers with over twenty service providers, offering resources in health, employment, education, childcare and war, along with free immigration legal consultations, health screenings and food distribution. And that's from our newsletter. Um, now going back to the agenda where it says apprehension of burglary suspect on top of Elava Heights. Now, um, we have uh worked with our, our constituent services director Lynn Robinson has um had numerous email conversations and voice uh call conversations with Chair Fong and Bert Lau and separately with HPD. Out of those conversations, um, they've decided that we want to actually get together with HPD, Chair Fong, Lau, council member and Lynn, um, to discuss um better things to bring that back to the community and um what better we can do. So um, there have been some little initial uh trying to get together and meet up, but uh we've been having some difficulty with that. It's possible we won't get together until the new year, but I'm still trying to schedule that out in the next week or so. Um, and as far as whether the burglary suspect has been apprehended, I would actually have to defer that to HPD. Um, any, any questions?
Any other questions from the board or the audience? Do not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Thirteen Senator, uh, Senator of District, Mr. Allrooms?
Good evening, everyone. Um, just a quick note on COVID, the fact it's still out there. Uh, vaccines are available both for COVID and for flu and the the COVID shots basically are like flu shots. Now they try to target the, the most prevalent um strain to protection from serious illness. Um, I'm just gonna be chair of, I've been chair of the Judiciary Committee for a few years now. I'm gonna be, continue to be chair of the Judiciary Committee in the Senate. Um I'm gonna be chair of, I've been chair of the Judiciary Committee for a few years now. I'm gonna be, continue to be chair of the Judiciary Committee in the Senate. Um the relevance in this instance is that um I'll be serving on the Penal Code Review um panel, which meets theoretically, it's best to meet once every five years, but it's been nine years and we go through the entire penal code, which is all the crimes, basically, and try to improve it. Make it cover, make the penalties stiffer for areas where we think it needs to be and alter it to be more efficient and in the interest of justice. I'm gonna be serving on the Subcommittee on Mental Health, which is an area that I've worked a lot on over the years. It's a very tricky part area of the law because on the one hand, you don't want to just and basically incarcerate people because they're mentally ill. On the other hand, they do pose threats to themselves and to the rest of us because of their mental illness from time to time. So we will be working on that to try to uh improve on the laws already passed on that issue. Um I think at the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned the sunshine, the sunshine law issue with the with the boards. I will be introducing a bill about that. Trying to make, my my feeling is that if if my name is on the agenda as an elected official, you guys have to be able to ask me questions. We need to be able to have some kind of a dialogue, even though it's not always pleasant for me. Um I think that's the way it needs to be and for the neighborhood board, that's one of the best things about the neighborhood board, I think, is that anybody can just come in and quiz their uh government officials on various topics. So we will be, I will be putting in a bill on that topic. I I think we have a pretty good chance of passing it. Um in general, I've been in favor of, it's probably most of your where the legislature itself is not covered by the sunshine law. I think probably we should be, but what it would require is the sessions be longer because it just takes longer to do everything. You know, the city council is covered by sunshine, but they're in session all year round. So, you know, there's that tension between um having to pay staff and pay per diem for all people coming from neighbor islands. Any case, I'm reluctant to go away from the sunshine law, but I do think that we have to be able to have dialogue. Um and then the question raised by this gentleman, um yeah, I'll I'll keep it in mind. I, it's it's sort of a catch twenty-two of um. You know, if you if you have a daughter and she gets pregnant and she doesn't tell you about it, that's that's hard to take. On the other hand, um you know, kids get to a certain age where they're probably not going to tell you about it. And uh so there's always that tension, but I will definitely keep your views in mind as we look at uh bills on that topic. Uh let's see. No, that was it.
We would like to thank you and I would like to uh thank you on behalf of the Neighborhood Board because right now that thing with the sunshine law is a very topic that it's like you said. The board is here was was made for the community to come and tell us their problem and what solutions the board can so-called do. And uh I really appreciate uh you backing the Neighborhood Board. Thank you.
Pleasure. Okay.
No, any questions from the audience? Can you come up?
Thank you, Senator Rhodes, for addressing my concern. Um I just wanted to ask what uh because you specialize or you're going to be talking about like the, you know, law coming up in this legislative session, like uh how with my concern in mind, how is uh the legislature gonna address the issue of the child not being able to pay for the services they get?
Yeah, so that part of it doesn't, wouldn't come up in the penal code because it's not an actual, there's nothing illegal. Uh it's not a, it's not a crime. It it's a civil um matter for the most part, the the paying of the bill. So unless you stole the money, then it would be penal. But if it's just a matter of owing the money, then it would normally be um what they call civil law, which means you sue the other party to, if if they, if they, if they think they, you owe them money, then they can sue you, but it's not a crime unless they steal it. Does that make sense? Okay. But.
But is that something the legislature is going to address? Like, how is the child going to pay?
I I don't know. I I don't, I I can't remember offhand where that, and there was a bill like this before, and I don't remember where it um where it left off because my recollection was that it was the parents were still supposed to pay, even though the child was not telling the parents.
Uh I I know in the previous session, I I unfortunately can't remember the exact uh bill number, but I read in the bill that it said the parent is, or the child is financially responsible for the service because if the parent doesn't know, they can't be responsible.
I don't remember it that way. I remember that the the parent was still responsible because it would be an insurance coverage issue probably. But I'll I'll keep it in mind. I just don't remember. I'm sorry.
Okay, uh thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Uh next we have the fourteenth Senator District, Donna Kim.
Aloha, everyone. Good evening. It's good to see all of you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh the community report, my report for the month has been um sent out digitally to the chair and all the Neighborhood Board members and uh any community members who've contacted my office and give us their emails, we've also sent it out. And if you haven't done that and you want to, you can email my office and add your name to the list. Uh just touch upon what was sent out. Uh basically, I just wanted to uh let everybody know about the good news at Farrington High School, that they will launch the nation's first high school. Uh Philop, Philobama, Phil, ah, Lebomati, no, Leboto Me, okay, got it now. Leboto Me Certification Program, and this is a part of the Health Academy. Uh the program offers students the opportunity to learn national certification. And upon completion, students will be honored in a special white coat ceremony to celebrate their achievements and new credentials. And if you don't know what this is, this is the process of drawing blood from a vein. So they're gonna be certified um to be able to do such a thing. Uh also beware of the avian flu. Uh it's been confirmed on Oahu last month, and so as a safety reminder, do not touch dead birds without gloves, and if you do handle dead birds, be sure to wash your hands thoroughly afterward. Also, holiday scams, as was brought up by the Board of Water Supply, is not just at the board, but all over. And so um be cautious, uh be cautious with all kinds of texts and unsolicited emails. Also be cautious about your packages. If you order stuff from the uh Amazon or Timo or whatever and they put it outside your door, uh that can get stolen and many have already gotten stolen. Uh and if you suspect you've been scammed, report it to the Hawaii Office of Consumer Protection, and that's eight oh eight five eight seven four two seven two. Also want to state that Palama Sediment is having the Christmas, annual Christmas party. It's going to be on December twentieth from four to eight PM. And there, it's always a good time there for the kids and and the neighborhood and the community. Uh I want to touch upon what was said about the sunshine. My colleague, part of the sunshine problem, I think, is the interpretation because I believe the sunshine was intended that boards cannot make a decision on anything that's on the agenda. You can discuss anything. You just can't make a decision. And I don't know, attorneys seem to get more and more um restrictive in in their interpretation of the sunshine law. So we might just have to re-clarify what the intent of the sunshine law was so that attorneys don't continue to interpret it in such a way to stifle discussion. Um also on the on the um parental rights issue that was also talked about. Um part of that is also because I I as a mom do not want my child to do something without my knowledge. I would want the physicians to let me know. But it was also brought to my attention after a great, there are some parents who are not responsible for their children or will not give approval or will not even pay attention to what's happening to the child. And in cases like that, uh the child has no other recourse to get any kind of help. If the parents aren't around or or they're they're not being responsible parents. Um and just because a measure has something in it, like the child is responsible for payment, doesn't necessarily mean it might pass. Because those are issues that we do discuss and we try to look at reasonable ways and solving problems. So those are the kinds of things that people can come to the legislature, write us or call us about their concerns, and will certainly take it under advisement, as my colleague Senator Rhodes have said. Um and so that's part of the process. And finally, I just want to say that the legislature is also looking for session hires. I know there's still people that haven't hired all their staff, so if you're interested in serving at the legislature for the session, and some offices may have um all-year-long positions, I encourage you to send in your resume to the Senate Clerk's Office as soon as possible. With that, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Um I would like to thank you for your support for the so-called um Neighborhood Board problem we have right now. Uh it's very enlightening to see our the our senators backing up the Neighborhood Board. So anyway, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I just want to say it's not just the Neighborhood Boards, you know, the city council is considered a near a board. So is the border regions. So is Monicaia. They're all having issues with some of these interpretations by attorneys. And so um yeah, and I've introduced measures in the past, but it hasn't gone up to be heard because, you know, as soon as you talk about sunshine, the media gets in and say, we're trying to, you know, um shut out, shut, oh, shut down the sunshine uh and for the rights. And so that's why a lot of my colleagues do not want to take this up.
Thank you. Uh next, uh Representative for the twenty-seven district, Jana. Are you on board?
Yes, hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you're on.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Happy holidays. Um just a quick update. Um we checked in about the school street bridge, the Leo Colony Botanical Garden encampment. Um DOT actually was just out there last week for the state portion only um on December fourth. Um they are trying to find a time with DFM, but again, I think it's a lot of the rain that we've been having. That's having, um they're having a hard time scheduling, but um again, we'll stay on top of that. Um and yeah, I just follow up until we can kind of get regular maintenance out there. Um I did want to share an opportunity if anyone knows some young people looking for a summer internship next year. Hiko is accepting applications for juniors and, oh, sorry, juniors and seniors, juniors and college juniors and seniors. Um this is a paid internship, um but the deadline for that is coming up on December sixteenth. Um this is gonna be um sorry, I closed my page. Um but I'll put some information onto what kind of programming that they um are offering into the chat. And if you know anybody looking for a summer opportunity next year, please let them know they have about a week more to kind of get, um take advantage of that. I heard Senator Kim talking about scams. I was gonna give the same um message. And then I'll also put um the email if you want to reach out to the Resource Center and the phone number in the chat as well. Please be careful out there. There's a lot of bad actors trying to take advantage of people, which is really unfortunate. Um but hopefully we can um stay ahead of that if people just have more information and, you know, double check if something doesn't seem right before you pay anything or kind of give people your information. Um and the last thing I have is just, um I think you've heard me talk, um some of you have uh heard me talk or I've talked to you about the assisted community treatment program. Um this is um kind of our court order program that kind of helps um creates court petitions to allow treatment for individuals suffering from serious mental illness or substance abuse disorders that make themselves dangerous to themselves or others. I mean, also, a lot of times we've been talking about this in um uh in the context of our homelessness population, which, you know, we've trying to get people into treatment. But if you know someone, a friend or family who might benefit from this, the Department of the Attorney General um launched a new website to kind of help people to throughout to this process to help a friend or family member or loved one kind of get the help they might need if they're in a bad situation. Um once you kind of reach out through this new website and portal, um it doesn't guarantee, you know, that you're gonna be able to get a court petition, but and that someone from the AG's office will be able to help you, you know, collect information, do an assessment to see if you can kind of get them the help that they might need. I'll put that information um to kind of check out um that as well into the chat. Um and just, you know, uh happy holidays to everybody. Good to see you all. Um if there's any questions I can take back, um please let me know.
Thank you. Uh next is uh District twenty-eight, Representative Daniel Ho. Are you on board? Moving on. We have District twenty-nine. Uh right now, District twenty-nine is still under Mijisuno because um Mr. Hasi will be our new District twenty-nine representative in January. Anyway, I see Mr. Hasi over here.
Actually, Mr. Nita, I'm four weeks into the new job. So I I don't have a lot to report, but I could just say that I'm here and and it's, you know, thank you very much for um for giving me a couple of minutes. I just wanted to share, um I have an office. You're welcome to join me at my office. The office number is three two zero. And um I do have a phone number, five eight six six zero five zero. Uh let's see. I'm gonna be serving as the Vice Chair of the Economic Development Committee. And the the chair for that committee is Chair Iligon from Puna on Ben Island. I'm also a member of the Tourism Committee with Chair Adrian Tam, and I'm a member of the Finance Committee, and the chair for that is Kalyamashira. And if you want, I wanted to share just one real brief thought about the Pohaku Street situation with the the house that, you know, that we were talking about earlier, which is, I think, actually, in addition to the the problems of of vagrancy and and squatters at that property, there's also been, I think, two or maybe even three structure fires there over the last several years. It's an ongoing problem. And, you know, I I think of the job of the legislature is really good about setting policy for the entire state. And we cannot target a particular house or a particular street. But I I was thinking about legislation that encourages HHFTC in particular, because it is sort of like the state of Hawaii's development, um property development arm, to assertively go and and identify properties like this burned-out structure of Pohaku Street and go and make offers to purchase it and then develop affordable housing on those properties. And, you know, within council, I'm sorry, within um House District twenty-nine, there's like half a dozen of properties like this that have burned over the last maybe ten years and have been sitting for years, you know. And and so that that means that there's all kinds of problems that come along with that, right? There's the vagrancy, there's the risk of of further structure fires because there's no one there to make sure that that there's no subsequent um fire activity. Um and there's also the fact that we're losing affordable housing or potential affordable housing inventory that we really need. You know, there is absolutely a housing crisis in Hawaii. So that's one of the some uh idea for legislation that we're looking at. Legislative session um commences on January fifteenth, so please come to the Capitol on the fifteenth. And yeah, come come in, um don't make yourself a stranger. Come in, be friendly. Thank you very much.
Um the reason I was delighted to have Representative Hasi. The background right on the twenty-ninth district, which is Kamhi's area, which I represent. We would, we will, we never had a representative come to this meeting to discuss our problems. So I'm glad that Mr. Hasi is now our representative, and I hope he will continue his support to this board and to uh Kamhi's district. Anyway, thank you very much. Next, the Governor Representative. Anyone? Moving on, um Representative on the first congressional district, Representative Ed Case. Let's move on. Uh item eight with approval of the minutes for October. Is there any objection to approving the minutes? Can I have someone make a look? Can we have a roll call for the voting?
Okay, so the motion is to approve the October regular meeting minutes. Ika?
Yeah.
Kaapu?
Yes.
Waka Wai?
Yes.
Mitsuda?
Yes.
Mitsuda? Mitsuda, can you turn on your mic? Na'aua Ota?
Yes.
Payne? Not here. Yamamoto?
I.
White? Nita?
Yes.
Kentrow?
Yes.
Christian?
Hi.
Chair Fong, not here. We have nine I, zero no, zero abstentions. The motion is adopted.
Thank you. Uh, next is, um, item nine, unfinished business, uh, the Lanaquila Palama Christmas Parade. Mr. Norm Nakamura?
Thank you, Chair. My name is Vernon Nakamura. I live across the street from Wes Fong for over twenty years. He still calls me Norm. That's why it's wrong. My name is Vernon, not Norm. Twenty years, he's across the street. Anyway, uh, I'll, I'll keep it short. Sorry, I'm yakking. Um, thank you, everyone who participated in the parade. Um, another successful year. Uh, we're switching over to, um, Kamame Alliance Club because they have a five one C three. So donations are tax deductible, uh, because prior years, they weren't you just kind of giving out the goodness of your heart. That being said, uh, we had a tight budget and, uh, thank you to, um, Donald and some other board members. We, we made a budget. The budget is, is pretty small, like almost only three thousand, but Donald's contribution really helped to pay for the bus for the Kwanahana School Kids to get back, back to the school. So, um, you know, we're, we're not a lavish, we're a short parade, but, you know, um, the Lions are gonna have a fundraiser, so I'll be back asking you folks to support the fundraiser. It, it's gonna be the luau or a luncheon. Um, very, very simple, but, you know, we need either contributions or, um, participation from the community because, um, you know, we, we kind of, kind of, kind of eased off on the business community because, um, I'm, I'm a former banker, I'm a retired banker. Several of my customers on Dillingham, they went out of business. So I, I don't, I feel kind of guilty going after, you know, the businesses right now, but, you know, maybe next year. But, you know, they're having a hard time with the construction. I mean, we need to do it, but it's, it's unfortunate. They're getting smashed down there, so please support local businesses, especially in our community. And again, thank you very much. Um, if you want a shirt, I can sell you this shirt for ten dollars. I have only largest and extra largest left, so we have a tight budget, but thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Vernon. Well, I have to correct myself. Uh, the next is on the new business, which is number ten. Uh, consideration to support Lilo Colony Gardens Resolution, Clarence Otto. Uh, we have, uh, an email from Clarence. Um, I read the thing. If, uh, if anyone has any comments with the resolution, um, you can speak now about it. The final, um, decision will be done in January when Wes Fong comes back from his so-called meeting. And we'll finalize it at that time. So if anyone has any comments on the resolution, uh, you can speak up right now. I think the resolution is very good, in my opinion. Uh, it was very thorough. Um, I will vote for it. Anyway, uh, if there's no, um, comments for that, we'll move on. The next one is number eleven, which is the community organization, Malahio. Anyone? Saint Francis, anyone? Lanaquila Multipurpose Senior Center, Harold?
Hello.
Are we, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, Lanaquila is, uh, currently, uh, they're getting ready for their Christmas party. And then their classes are on, um, finished in the end of November. And they'll, they're kind of on a Christmas break, though there are some classes making, doing some makeup, makeup classes that they needed to do. And then starting on the fourteenth of this month will be the Christmas break, and then they'll start up again in January. And that's it.
Thank you. Next one is the Princeful Lilia Library, Brendan? No one, okay. Other nonprofit organization? Anyone? Um, number twelve? Say again? Oh, anyway, um, this is the candidate registration for the twenty twenty five Neighborhood Board election. If anyone out there would like to come and join us, uh, we'd be happy to. Um, there is a flyer if you need to look at it. Uh, I have it over here if anyone wants to look at it, I'll grab a copy. Anyway, uh, the next meeting will be scheduled Monday, January thirteenth at six thirty in my cafeteria. Um, Opa, Neighborhood Board Fourteen Monthly Meeting can be reviewed on channel forty-nine on the first Saturday at nine P M. And the second and fourth Thursday at two P M. If not, uh, can I have someone to adjourn? Say again? Neighborhood Board Fourteen is adjourned. Thank you for coming.